All right, so welcome everyone, we're gonna go ahead and kick this off as people come in. They should be able to come automatically in. Those of you on Facebook, you're more than welcome. I put the link in the description, or you can actually find the link in the website if you still want to join us. So this is a town hall that, you know, thanks for coming out tonight. Just so everybody knows, this meeting's being recorded. Feel free to use the Q and A feature, or raise your hand feature. This meeting is streaming live on Facebook and will be available on Facebook and my YouTube channel after the meeting. I'm doing this to, I'm doing this meeting later in the evening to try to draw a younger crowd and as I can see in the participants. I've got some regulars that are here, but I'm also trying to really sort of reach that that working youth here in Gilroy. So I pressed hard to try to get a lot of them to come out and I'm pleased that there's, there's quite a few some, there's some names that I recognize and some names that I don't. So I'm glad, I'm glad that works. I'll try to change it up as much as I can. So for those that are new here, I'm Zach Hilton, Gilroy City Council member. I hosted these town halls and live events on social media during my campaign and made the commitment to continue them. I have also kept my newsletter that I email out normally the weekend before our council meetings. Our council meetings are normally held on Mondays, usually the first and the third. Sometimes it'll be special meetings or study sessions as well. And you can join the newsletter by going to my website, which is www.zachhilton.com, Z A C H Hilton dot com. And then scroll all the way down to where it says stay connected by email. And I'm also on social media and those links are on my website too. So tonight is going to be an open forum town hall. You know, like I said, if anybody has any questions, use the raise your hand feature, put it in the, the Q and A. And I'll take those well, and I got a bunch of questions submitted ahead of time, so don't feel shy. I've, I've got, I've got plenty of content here. Some pretty interesting questions that, that we'll go over as well. And all my previous town halls can also be found online. So here's some updates on programs that I have continued through through the campaign and also some of the committee assignments that I'm attached to for the city council. First off is that I've been doing a council sort of like a office visits, if you will, be a zoom sort of like an open, open office hours. That I've done that a few times and I found that them being pretty valuable, it kind of gives that one-on-one. You know, since we're still in the middle of this pandemic here, you know, if people feel comfortable, they want me to come speak at a, at a barbecue or any sort of like HOA or your business, I'm still more than willing to do that. You know, as far as, as long as we follow all the, you know, protocols and all that kind of stuff. But sometimes it's easier just to meet via Zoom. So I'm still doing those. I usually push those out on my newsletter or on social media when those hours are. Sometimes I'll try to do it during the daytime. Sometimes in the evening, sometimes in the morning, try to change it up for everybody. And then the Gilroy Bike Match Program. So when Gilroy bicycles are essential transportation for many who need to get around during COVID-19 outbreak. And 18 months later, this still, this still plays true. This might include traveling to essential jobs, running crucial errands, or participating in mutual aid for vulnerable people who cannot leave their homes. We are connecting Gilroy residents who have an extra bicycle to Gilroy residents who need one. We are still looking for bikes to be donated. Please check those side yards and garages for bikes in working condition and we will get it matched with someone who needs one. Stats to date, we've had 112 bikes, 125 participants and 112 matches. All the details are online by searching Gilroy Bike Match. And then I also encourage you to take the Gilroy Bike Pledge. Our Bicycle Pedestrian Commission is, if you take the pledge and then, you know, you kind of like, you, 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 you choose to abide by all the standards. You know, good etiquette of bike riding. And then at the same time, every month they do a drawing. And that drawing usually gets you something from a local business. Lately, it's been the Boba Tea Shop. They've been putting together a nice gift, so I encourage you to get out there and do that. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the biggest thing I want to push through, I didn't, I talked about this last April. But it's power down your electricity usage from four to nine. That messaging has been happening since the beginning of the year. You'll see it on billboards, you'll see it through social media, it's in your, it's in your, your, your bills as well, your electric bills. Historically and currently, a majority of customers are billed for electric usage on a tiered rate, which prices electricity based on how much is used. Silicon Valley Clean Energy customers have been opted in to a time of use billing, billing rate as part of a mandatory statewide transition. This changes electricity pricing from how much, how much is used to when it is used. So the prices are always going to be higher between four and nine PM. So small little ways that you can think of, I have a pool here at home, so I used to start the pool pump at seven, now it starts at nine. So trying to make those little tiny transitions helps. And I, it took me a little bit to try to play around with that and get our, figure out not using our items between four and nine, but my bill finally went back down. So happy to say that the statewide transition is part of an effort to better align electricity usage to when the grid has a higher penetration of renewable energy sources. And it'll help reduce the evening peak electricity demand that uses dirty fossil fuel energies. For Visit Gilroy, that's another one of committee assignments. This one's pretty cool. So Visit Gilroy is welcoming three different digital influencers from the Bay Area and Sacramento area to our destination over the next three months. And these influencers have over 40,000 Instagram followers and will be writing Instagram posts about their various experiences when visiting Gilroy. With the South Valley United for Health, it was announced that the county was awarded a 1.5 million five-year CDC climate adaptation grant, which will be focused here on South County. The focus will be on increasing the county capacity to implement climate resilience programming. We also talked about the efforts that are underway to increase the tree canopy in Gilroy and to address climate change. Support is needed in identifying neighborhoods and residents interested in having trees planted in October and November. While we are in a drought, planting trees is important to address anticipated temperature increases in Gilroy over the next decade. The trees that are being planted are selected based on soils and climate factors. The area focus is Northeast Gilroy. The Parks and Recreation Commission will be sharing the website created to request a free tree. This project is funded by county and coordinated by the Office of Sustainability and our city forest. Gilroy is also back on the radar with the County of Public Health Department's Tobacco-Free Communities Program. With the recent passing of our Smoke-Free Parks Ordinance that got their attention. There are several more ordinances that we can pass, including smoke-free public events, outdoor dining areas, which I didn't know could, you could still smoke in those areas. And while most of the newer multifamily housing is all 100% smoke-free, that's not the case with some of our older developments. Funding for education encouragement programs with community-based organizations focus is available through the grants as well. In 2014, we led the program that we can revisit. We led the pro, the county with a tobacco retail permit program. That's where we limited sales near schools. This is a program that we can revisit to strengthen. This was done back in 2014. And there's technical assistance available from staff from public health. I'm also currently in some meetings with the tobacco-free program staff. And more than likely what I'll end up doing is making a request back to, back at council once I formulate, you know, the best practices and ways we can move forward. I'll bring that back to council and, and, and request a future agenda item. You know, see what sort of tobacco-free legislation we can try to strengthen here in Gilroy. So, um, like I said before, if you, you know, feel free to raise your hand or use that Q and A feature. If you want to, you know, come on here and ask a question, other than that, I'm gonna, I'll let you guys figure that out for a moment. I'm gonna go ahead and, and just kind of run through a series of questions that I got ahead of time and I consistently get this one. It, for me, it was confusing as well. You know, when I first started out as, as an advocate and then joined the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. So how many seats are open for election in 2022? So there's seven of us in this body, right? There's six city council members and then there's one mayor. We are all still at large. There's, so there's no districts. The Gilroy Unified School District, they are in districts. For us right now, we're not. So there's three open seats that are, that are open for November 2022. The filing period will more than likely be next July. There are no primaries for, for our city council race. Everybody puts their name in the hat and the top three get those seats. And it, it doesn't matter if you come in first, second, or third. It's not like you get plugged into a certain, like I said, certain district or anything like that. It's the top three. The mayor's seat is, is up for election in November 2024. So that's the only difference between like the mayor and three council members and then on the other years, on the other two years, it's three council members. If you're considering to run, please contact my office. I'd be more than happy to talk about the position. I actually see a couple potential candidates that I've been trying to recruit and that have reached out to me that are here tonight, so I won't name their names. I'll let them, let, let, let them, let everybody know, but it's good to see them here tonight and good to see them engaged. So the next one I had is what legislation have you introduced and where can we find it? So what I tried to do is I, I kept my website up during the campaign and the reason why is that it really helped me have like a historical perspective of items that I've either talked about or written in a blog, press releases. It helps me, myself, keep myself organized, but also allows people, new people that I meet or people that hear about me online or anywhere else for you to be able to, you know, sort of get a capture of what I have done in the past. And I did leave a lot of my accomplishments and things that I accomplished when I was on the, when I was a commissioner for the bike and ped. So you can also find that stuff on there. There's a legislation tab that's on the website and there you can read. What I try to do for legislation that I personally try to do is I always write a memo. And the reason for the memo, it's, it's, it keeps it concise for me. It's concise for staff. When I give, I usually give them a heads up if I'm going to introduce something. It's there for my colleagues as well. They all know, we don't, the process we have right now to get new items on the agenda is we simply just stated at the meeting. But for me, I find it, I find it kind of hard to be able to react or really understand it without reading ahead of time what my colleague is trying to get out. So I, that's what I try to do. And so there, if you go to the legislation tab on my website, zachhilton.com, you'll be able to look at the legislation, you'll be able to look at the submitted memo that goes along with each of it. And then I usually write the status of it. So items that have, have been approved for a future agenda, I'll usually write that on there. It'll be in italics. Sometimes ones that haven't been approved, what I'll do is I'll usually write like next steps. We can always reintroduce legislation at any meeting. There's nothing that prevents you from introducing something, trying to get a thumbs up, thumbs down for it to move forward. And a lot of times I'll try to have public comment associated with that or an organization to back that up. That's more than half the time, the way good legislation comes about is, is either there's a, a group or an organization or citizens that come together to try to make change in their city. So this is an avenue that, that I always appreciated of having with, with legislators that I've worked out with. So I've introduced a number of items that have to do with either active transportation, gun control, homelessness, noise and residential that mixes next to commercial. And then bike parking standards. And I, I always like to say that one of the best ways I believe to know a politician is to see how they vote on issues that come before them. And one of my interns updates the city council voting record. This is something that I personally do with my office. Again, it's a time historical stamp for me because what I'm able to do is, is if I can't remember what happened two years ago, it's, it's, it's hard for me and it's hard for a lot of people to go to the city's website, go to the minutes, go look it up. For me, I like to be able to visually watch it, so I have a link there that's attached where it timestamped where you can actually watch us deliberate that agenda item. And then it summarizes who voted yes, who voted no, or if someone abstained. And then it also gives you the, the agenda packet. So you can actually read it yourself. So we're trying to use, trying to use all the sensors here, right? You can actually, you can physically look at it, you can listen to it, you can watch it and you can also read it. That, but I, I think that's something that's important. If you want the, you know, the official meetings, minutes, then obviously you gotta go to the city's website. But everything that I put inside there references back to something official and I, 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 I kind of appreciated, you know, someone had done this before. So that's why, that's why I decided to do it on my own. So another thing that we have now is that when we did, when the council did their goal setting, we came up with a legislative work plan and we did this back in February. This will happen every two years when a new council is seated. And you come up with a legislative work plan. And, and what this will do is that these are items that will come up on a future agenda. You don't have to lobby staff and, and your colleagues to try to get an item on the agenda. So I'm proud of, you know, some of the items that, that, that my office was able to, to get on the legislative work plan for fiscal year '22 and '23. And like I said, these items won't require a future, a request for future agenda item. You can find more details on these items also on the website as well. So I'm going to go over eight of them that I had, that I had listed on here. And like I said, if you go to the city's website, you can find out all of them that are on there. So in lieu of fees and Nexus studies, these are associated with them in order to have them applicable. So if I'm building a, a restaurant in downtown Gilroy and there's really in the historical district where there's no place for me to like put a parking structure, the city sets standards that, for minimum off-street parking. And one of the, one of the lines in there is that if you don't have room for parking or if you want to have more space for your commercial or your residential, you can pay it in lieu of fee. But when, when you do that, you need to have something called a Nexus study. And that calculates a current rate on, okay, if you don't want to have two parking spaces, then, then let's say it costs $50,000 and then that $50,000 would go towards parking and another infrastructure. So that's really important that we get those. As we look at off-street parking later on this year in our zoning code amendments changes, those Nexus studies, if they're needed, will need to get done because they weren't done years ago when we last updated our zoning ordinance. Parking management is another one that, that I'm a big fan of and that's to keep, that's to keep turnover of parking spots for, for our downtown. You know, a lot of times now you'll have business owners that are parking there for long-term. You'll have residents that live down there parking for long-term businesses and restaurants that thrive turnover, right? You, if you talk to a restaurant here, they always talk about table turnover. So what it'll do is especially in these parking lots, like the one on Seventh and Agleberry that we're getting, that we're, it's in the design phase right now. What I'm, what I'm a proponent for and what this is, we'll talk about is how do we manage the parking? How do we, how do we have variable rates based on time of day? And, and using those fees that we would collect to go right back into maintaining that infrastructure. You know, cleaning the sidewalks, lighting, repaving these, the parking lots. And you know, what I'm, what I'm a fan of is to be able to extend that out into our busiest commercial corridors. So that's pretty much Monterey Road on 10th. Coming all the way down Monterey Road and then going down to First Street and First Street up to Santa Teresa. Both those two corridors have bike lanes and several, if you're out there every now and then, you'll see people like blocking the bike lanes. You know, that's parking enforcement. Parking enforcement can take that. Sometimes people are just parking there because they, for overflow parking. But parking management, you'll, you'll, you'll see that come back. The unhoused community, we just talked about this, this week at the council. And that's going to be coming back in October. You're going to see things like safe parking programs. There's trash collection company, there's been multiple, there was reported, there's multiple bids for both those coming out. And then there's several other items that we're using to address the unhoused and at the same time addressing like, you know, the aesthetics and it's not, I wouldn't necessarily blame all the, the legal dumping out there on the homeless. I mean, I was on my bike ride today, way far out into the country and I saw air-conditioning units and, and couches being dumped and tires. That's not necessarily homeless, but obviously it doesn't look good, right? And then, so the other ones, Climate Action Benchmarks, Reach Codes, Reach Codes, we just had a presentation on this. On September 13th, we had a presentation from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and our staff. And what we are moving forward with is, is looking at all the options that we have for, for building out a more all-electric new construction. And, and that includes residential and commercial and then also furthering our reach. That's why they're called Reach, our reach to go above and beyond the green building code. And, and actually look at, you know, doing more than what's required. And we did not do this back in 2019 when the last time the, the building codes were updated. So this gives us an option to look at what has already been updated. We don't want to do the Reach Code now because a lot of times the items that are coming forward in 2023 would already be included. So this gives us time to do community outreach, gives us time to do developer outreach and really set up a good, a good flow and using the, the leverage from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and their expertise. And, and working with not only other cities in our county, 11 other cities that have adopted these Reach Codes. They have best practices and they're really able to come back and, and work with our staff on that. I'm, access to technology, especially for public works is a big one for me. And then, um, let's see, that's all I talked, I already talked about the safe parking policy. And then that will coincide with the RV towing policy. We really need a place to be able to, families that are, you know, living out of their RVs, it's unfortunate. But you know, rather than towing them and having that expensive cost, if they end up being in an area for too long, we've, there's really great resources out there, like a safe parking program and others where we can try to give them resources. So rather than, you know, showing up and ticketing them and having them, you know, move along, we can actually tell them, you can't, you can't be here. This is not gonna, this doesn't work, but here's a safe place for you to go. So to me, that's important. So, you know, raise, raise your hand if you have a question. Or you, like I said, use that Q and A feature, but I'm going to keep rolling through some of these questions. So this next one, this next one is a, is a good deep dive into what it's like being a council member, especially in a small, small city like Gilroy. So someone asked me, how is the balance between work-life, family life and council life? I'd say that right now I have a good balance. I feel, I feel like I have, you know, because I'm still a full-time firefighter, paramedic, right? And that schedule, sometimes it, it, sometimes I'm, I'm not able to show up to, you know, to meetings that I'd want to be. But at the same time, it also gives me the opportunity when I am home for, for those four days off. I am able to attend meetings that start at eight o'clock in the morning. Like I had the Visit Gilroy Board Meeting this morning at 8:00 AM. I'm able to do constituent services in other times when people, you know, on their time, whether they're shift workers or they work the, the nine to five and they want to meet in the evening. But it really has, at first I thought, okay, I'm going to do it all, right? I'm going to be at every single meeting. And at the same time, you know, I promised my family that I would drop some stuff that I was doing in order to become a council member. And it's tough, you know, we don't have any staff assigned to us. I do not get paid a livable wage for being on the council, so I can't take a leave of absence from my full-time job. Right? But at the same time, we're expected and we have the workload of a full-time job. You know, whether that's our committee assignments that we're on, that, you know, showing up to the, to the city council meetings. They'll have study sessions, they'll have special meetings. So it's definitely, I've set up boundaries for myself so I don't get burnt out. So yes, there will be times where, you know, like this past Monday, I wasn't able to make it to the council meeting because I was on duty. So there is a, there, there, there's a healthy balance that I'm able to do there. And like I said, it, it, it does allow me, it gives me the flexibility to be at meetings during the daytime when others aren't able to do that. And you know, th- this is exactly what happens when, when you have, when you don't pay a full-time living wage to your legislators, right? And you, and you don't have any staff. But you know, my heart's in it. I do a lot of the heavy lifting around meetings and not everything comes down to the actions at a meeting, at a council meeting, official meeting. I was talking about this with someone the other day. It seems like majority of the actions are a lot of the work that takes to even get that item in front of you. And whether that's, you know, organizing public comment, making sure that you, you completely understand the impacts of the project. You watching the project or the policy or anything coming through our city commissions. There's a lot of weigh-in on items before they even show up to the council meeting. So family life, you know, I, I am a husband, I am a, I am a father, that's, that, those come first. And, uh, you know, my daughter still goes to public school, but the, you know, when they're both away at work and school, that does kind of give me the option to be able to meet with people again, like, you know, during the daytime and show up to these committee assignments. And it's funny because during COVID, it got really busy around the, the campaign. And even after the campaign, when I was got elected and I remember my wife and daughter saying, telling me like, why do you have all this stuff planned? And I told them, I said, you know what, I actually was doing this all along the last four years while you guys were at work and school. I usually get up and do a lot of work for the Bike Ped Commission. You know, whether it was writing out policies and getting stuff ready for our agenda or just, or just meeting and listening with people. And then I go off for my, my bike ride, which keeps my sanity. So that's how I strike a balance. That's why sometimes you'll see me at meetings. Where maybe you thought like, I thought you had to go to work, you know? And then that's when sometimes you won't see me at meetings. And it doesn't mean that I'm not paying attention. It doesn't mean that, that I don't watch them after. But that's, that's life of a young legislator right now. So another one I got was, what and where are the current city council goals? So if you go to the, go to the city's website, go under city council, you can find our goals. These were also a part of the work plan that happened earlier this year. So I'm going to read them off to you. And, and just so you know too, they're all of equal importance. There's no like ranking of them. Develop a financially resilient organization that relies on local revenues and resources. Maintain and improve city infrastructure, including streets, facilities, and incorporates green energy practices. Promote economic development activities that create opportunities for quality employment and increase the city's tax base. Ensure neighborhood equity from city services, including public safety, streets, parks and recreation. Promote availability of safe, affordable housing for all Gilroy residents. So a lot of times you'll see those goals, like I said, every two years. They might vary a little bit. We didn't really change them up too much, but we, we took some of the wording out, but we also condensed it, right? Because if you have too many goals or it's too widespread, you kind of don't feel like you really captured the meaning of all of them. So, uh, let's see here. I'll do this one. And again, if anybody has any questions, you can drop them in the, the Q and A or, or you can put them on there as well. So I have a question here. It says, how many RV safe parking spaces are available? Do you accept monetary donations for purchasing bikes? Yes, I do take, yes, I do take monetary donations for purchasing bikes. And actually, it's usually not the bikes. It's usually ends up being like the tires, the tubes, handlebars, grip tape. A, a couple of people, when they've donated their bike, they've also put some, you know, money aside for the envelope on that. And that, that helps out a lot because a lot of the bikes that I get, they're in great condition. It's just they have flat tires and I'll usually try to put the tubes inside there that, that if they go over thorns, the kid, kids go over thorns, it'll self-seal. So as far as the, how many RV safe parking spaces are available right now? Right now there are none, but when we get these RFPs that are coming back, and I heard we got several of them, it should be back in, one of the meetings in October. Either October 4th or the 18th. We'll, we'll, we'll hear what their, what their suggestions are. On some of them, it's actually, I don't know, the one in Morgan Hill actually has RVs. I know that they, that people sleep in their cars. But that was a question I had and I was waiting for them to come back to ask. So you get asked like, you know, could you have two RV spots? And then let's say like eight car spots. So hopefully we're going to get a, a better answer, better answer on that. Thank you for that question. Okay, um, so this next one is uh about affordable housing. And this is a good one. And I kind of wrote um, just, you know, kind of like a bunch of uh, a bunch of answers um to go over, but. Um, it, it, it really, I'm sure this question really came from the, the group that I was trying to, to really um get in touch with tonight, too. So it says, what are you doing to improve housing affordability for us that have good-paying jobs after college? And are moving back to Gilroy to raise a family? Um, this is exactly where I was nine years ago. Um, you know, when my family, we were a little family, we were living um up in uh Pleasance in Dublin area. We were renting a house up there. We actually first had a condo, then we rented a house as soon as my daughter was born. And uh, I quickly realized the struggle um to find affordable housing. I have a good job, but um, when it comes to affordability and trying to um not rent a place that. Um, exceeds the, you know, the, the rent burden, so I'm never able to um afford to buy my own place. That was the struggle that I know a lot of people are having. Um, when we moved back here to Gilroy, we lived in a rental house for two years to really make sure we wanted to be back here. Um, this is where my wife grew up. Um, all her friends were moving back home. Um, and this is where um, after two years, this is where we wanted to have our forever home. Um, and when we were trying to finally buy a house, um, I, we had outbid it like four times. And finally, on the fourth one, um, we threw everything out there to try to get it. And um, so you know, I understand the struggles of affordable housing and what it's like to. To be in a position where you have to rent because you don't have the capital for a down payment yet. You're trying to either build up your credit or build up that down payment. Um, but you're looking, you know, sometimes the best thing to do is to buy something small. Buy a condo, buy a townhome. That's where I started. And then you build up that equity to be able to get a single-family home. Um, but certainly buying a single-family home is not um the ultimate end for everybody. Some people are more comfortable um being in a duplex. Um, some people are more comfortable staying in a condo or a townhome. Um, you know, but the city council has made a bold statement in our strategic goals that we are committed to safe and affordable housing. I just read it right before. Um, and we followed that up with a multi-year contract with a company called House Keys. So what House Keys does is they ba- they manage all of our below-market rate housing. So anything that has affordability um attached to it usually means that it's deed restricted. Right now it's deed restricted for fifty-five years. Um, and all of those, we no longer just sort of walk away from that development and just be like, okay, you, you're good. We trust that you're gonna. Um, ensure that when those, when people start making more money, that you, that you need to find them a different place to live. So that way, the next person that's in that lower income can move into that apartment. Um, that's the transition that we need to constantly have. If people just stay in those units and no one ever checks on them and they're now they're making more money. But the person that just got out of college, or let's say they're working in, you know, working while they're going to college, they need a place to live, too. Um, someone fresh out of high school that's going to Gavlin College needs an apartment to live in. Not everybody um has the luxury to live at home. Um, and and as many of you might know, no matter where you are, um, listening to this town hall tonight. Um, there's one, two, three generations living in homes together, sometimes even in apartments. Um, that, that is a struggle that, 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 that keeps me up. Um, and that's just, I was very happy when we finally got this House Keys program because not only do they. Um, they play a key role in advising City Hall and programs and policies. They are. Which was referred to the September thirteenth quarterly update from House Keys. They are the, the boots on the ground. Right? So staff can't manage this from City Hall. They need people out there, and that's what this group is going to do. This, the, this group will be the liaison and will be the advocates for our residents here in Gilroy. Um, House Keys is also in Morgan Hill. Um, they will be able to um not, they will be able to manage people that are in units. Um, build a relationship. So when they get a pay raise and they exceed the, the affordability of that unit. Sometimes there's, the, the mix of affordability is in the same building. Sometimes it might be on the other side of town. Um, that of, tha- that ability for them to say, hey, I am going to make too much money next year, I'm getting a raise. Or I, I, I got a promotion. I can't be here anymore. Help me find another place. That's exactly what this group will do. This group will help you find um, you know, another affordable place to live. And ultimately, um, House Keys also has a home ownership program. Okay, so if you want to rent forever, that's totally fine. I actually rent, renting is sometimes simplicity. Uh, it, you, you don't have to worry about the water heater, the roof, uh, um, you know, you don't have to worry about any of that stuff, right? And um, and the beauty of affordable housing is that depending on whatever you make, um, whether it's uh, you know. Um, you know what? I'm going to tell you here right now, this, thi- this is going to blow your, blow your mind. Um, so. In two thousand and twenty-one, the area meeting income, this is what they build affordability on in Santa Clara County for a four-person household. Is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Okay, that's the area meeting income. That's what they. Um, break down all the levels of, of affordability. So you'll have apartment houses that are um built for extremely low income. So that's zero to thirty percent AMI. Okay, so it tops out at forty-nine thousand, seven hundred. And I had a conversation with this about, about this, this morning with somebody, where they were talking about um low-income housing. And I said, you, you need to understand the difference of, of, of the levels of these. They're not all treated the same. And and lo and behold, I could bet you that a lot of us know, a lot of young people that make less than forty-nine thousand dollars a year. But yet they're extremely low income when it comes to the area meeting income. Very low income um is forty-nine thousand to eighty-two thousand. Low income is eighty-two thousand to a hundred seventeen thousand, and then the moderate or what we call missing middle. Um, they make anywhere between a hundred seventeen to a hundred eighty-one. Um, so the moderate is the missing middle. The question that this probably came from, from that person is exactly where. Where um, we are trying to build up our inventory of, of missing middle housing. Get this off for a second. We're trying to build, build up our, our um. Missing middle housing because. We were supposed to build a certain amount of units based on our regional housing needs allocation. We're at seventeen percent. Okay, and so that means that we've only completed seventeen percent of these type of units. Now, that's not all to blame on the city. It's not all to blame on funding. It's a whole lot of, of mess to, to blame that on. Um, but uh, but here's, here's a good stat that you need to know. So seventy-five percent of our, of our land here in Gilroy is zoned for single-family homes. Okay, so single-family homes, if you build, if majority of your land is built off for that. And only ten percent are for small multifamily, two to four units. Um, these could be duplexes, um rental houses, or they could just be, let's just say they're, it's a duplex. So you, you live in one side and you rent out the other. Okay? Um, and then large multifamily, um, we're at tw- twelve percent, we're medium or large multifamily units. So that's, that's, that's five or more. Um, right now, there's something called ADUs, accessory dwelling units by right. Um, if you live on a property, a single-family home property, you can build one of these. Um, they're usually right around a thousand square feet. Two bedroom, two bath, two bedroom, one bath, um, depending on what you can fit in that footprint. Um, if anybody wants to build these type of units out there, and I actually have one in, in uh, in our neighbor's yard. Um, you can, you can deed restrict it to a certain affordability. It would greatly help out if you could deed restrict those for moderate. And as you can see, someone who's making a hundred seventeen thousand dollars, I think they got a pretty good job. Um, and that's a pretty good rent income. And um, those are the type of units that we need to look for. Um, there's also, um, we're also developing what's called an inclusionary housing ordinance. This is going to come back out. Um, I believe we're going to have a study session in October. The date's not out yet. Um, to talk about our um housing element for the future, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one. Is when our next arena cycle comes out, our housing element. I'm not going to get deep into that on this, on this subject, but. Um, we're going to develop an inclusionary housing ordinance. So what that means is that if a developer wants to come in. And build a hundred market-rate units, they don't want to have anything to do with affordability. They will have to have a certain percentage allocated affordable housing. Um, that's never existed here before. Um, and that's huge because um, whatever, you know, what we can do is, is you don't want to um constrict it and say, it must be extremely low income. Or it must be um very low income, because what I've heard is that if you, if you're too specific. You'll never get a builder to come in, right? Um, but if you give them some leniency and you're telling them, this is where we are short. We would appreciate it if you could put moderate, missing-middle housing, um, you know, into your comp, in, into your complex. And uh, you know, it could be anywhere from like ten percent or fifteen percent. Um, the only thing that we have in the books right now is if somebody builds a new neighborhood, like when Glen Loma was built here in Gilroy. They, however many units that they built, they had to have fifteen percent of those for affordable. And they're building those out right now. Um, so ADUs, like I said, accessory dwelling units can be built by, built on any property by right. Um, and then the junior ADUs, those are attached to your main house as well. Currently, right now, you can't sell your ADU. So if I were to build one in my backyard, I could rent it to somebody. But it's not available right now for home ownership. There's a state bill that I don't believe has been signed yet, but um, what it would do, it would give accessory dwelling units, it would give first right. Um, to purchase those um to a nonprofit. And um, what that would do is that nonprofit would come in, like House Keys has a for-profit side and a nonprofit side. So that, that nonprofit could come in there and buy up that ADU. And have that ADU constantly turned over to a new owner. So um, but keep the, keep it below market. That's another way for missing middle to be able to get a foothold in housing. Build your own equity um so that you can move into your own um, your own home. Um, and, and start building that wealth for yourself. Um, one, one build that, that I, I was supportive of is SP nine. And SP nine was signed into law, go into effect January first. And essentially what this do, what this does is allows a property owner anywhere in the city by right to either split their lot. Okay, because a lot of times in some of these single-family um neighborhoods, you have um, you know, a small home and a huge lot. Or you just have a huge home, um, and still a lot of space available. And let's say you're an empty nester. Let's say all the kids are gone and you don't need all that space. Um, you could either split the lot and, and develop the, the one next to you and live, live in the one right here. Right? Um, you could rent that out, you could sell it. Um, if you wanted to do, on the other side, if you wanted to make a duplex. Um, so if you wanted to just literally demolish your house, build a duplex on there. Be able to age in place, live in the neighborhood that you raised your kids. Um, uh, live there in one side and rent the other side out. Um, that's what a lot of people are doing right now with their ADUs. Um, some people uh are either living in their ADUs and renting out their house. Or vice versa, they're renting out the ADUs and living in their home. Um, these are all resources to, you know, to really try to build up some of that missing middle. Um, it's a, it's gentle density. Um, it's natural, they're naturally affordable. If you go to most uh downtowns, older downtowns. Like if you come down here to Gilroy. And you wander around, these homes already exist. This is something that we used to do. Um, uh, you know, a long time ago, um, before majority of the land was zoned for single-family homes. Um, and, and if you want to build a, you know, a duplex, um, you have to, I'll go over this briefly, too. You have to uh abide by all um objective design standards that that city has. So a lot of, you know, there was rhetoric going around that, that these bills would uh, uh, you know, create an apartment complex next to you. Um, that's not, y- you can't do that. Um, it has to, the, the. The style of the home duplex or whatever has to look like the one next door. You're not going to build a, a two-story apartment house next to single-family lots. Um, so that brings me to objective design standards. This is something we should have done years ago. And what it is, it's a, it's a process. It just went through the planning commission. It'll come to the council, um, probably maybe in October. Maybe in November. And what it is, is that um some state law um allows a developer um to uh streamline the process to, to get the affordable housing. And, and they've always been able to do this. We have two projects in town right now that are doing this, but they're not subject to our objective design standards because we didn't have them created. So they can, the look and feel of the building can be whatever they want, as long as they follow the code, they were allowed to design it. Well, our objective design standards, um, now, a- and I'm not going to go into each of them, but uh you can look those up on the city's website. We developed, we had interim ones back in, back in May, and the full ones are going to be coming back in about a month or so. And what these will, what these will do is that it'll, it's, it's what the community wants to see in their buildings. Um, and uh, whether that has to do with setback, um, the massing of the buildings. Um, the facades, the way they look, the entrances, um, amenities is a big one. So what you'll see in there is that if they're twenty units or more, it has to have a public art piece. Um, if they're going to put in bicycle parking, it has to be a certain style of bicycle parking. Um, and uh, and if it's like five units or more, I forget the way that it worked when I watched the planning commission meeting, but. It's basically like they have to pick an amenity. If it's five or more units, you have to pick something like a barbecue, a playground. Um, you know, bocce ball, you have to pick some sort of public amenity to go, to, to go along with it. Um, so that, you know, that'll be coming out um soon, but all these are, are really ways to, not only, so I, I wrapped up and I talked about. How we're trying to build affordability for this moderate missing middle, right? And at the same time, for all of our developments in affordable housing, we want them to be pleasant places to live. And we are not going to just um, uh, approve the project and turn away and walk away. That's, we are actively managing these properties. Um, we are actively looking to build up the city's portfolio of below-market rate housing. Um, and to keep that turnover, um, ensure that there's no subleasing going on. Um, ensure that there's no lease violations happening. Um, and s- some, I mean, I, I get it. So sometimes it happens. I mean, if, if, uh, if, if you start, if you get your hours cut back or you start losing um money and, and you want to go rent out a room. Um, to, to uh, you know, help that, help make that rent, I get that. Um, but we can't have subleasing going on because the, all that does is, is it gives that. Um, you know, there's too many cars, the cars start flooding out into residential neighborhoods. Um, we, we want the aesthetics to look pleasing. So that's really what we're trying to do for all affordable housing with our objective design standards, which can be. Legislated and changed at any time. Um, and they'll talk about this. So if, if um, uh. You know, we decide that we don't like the way that this facade looks or these um amenities choices, we can always change it. It, we own it, it's ours. Um, so we can change that at any time. All right, so I'm going to uh wrap it up here. Um, again, if there's any questions, um, use the Q and A feature, raise your hand. Um, the last thing I want to um just talk about is uh someone asked me, when will um the council meetings be back streaming? So um, that's one thing that during the pandemic, I think initially, it, it was hard for all of us, uh, the, all of the cities to learn how to adapt. Um, but with Zoom streaming on Facebook, um, uh, um, we got more public comment. Um, we got people engaged. We were finally on their time. They weren't on our time. So if they wanted to make public comment, if they wanted to voice their um, their opinion. Or try to get something, um, you know, put on our a- agenda, um, they would have to come down to City Hall. Um, and that doesn't work for everybody. Some people are commuting home, some are at home with the kids. Um, the streaming will come back to the chambers. We are committed to doing that. Um, we actually already funded all the technology, but we're short microchips. So there's a global chip shortage out there and it, yeah, and it affected us. Um, so. Um, you, what you'll see hopefully in October, November is the ability for, you'll actually see us in the chambers. Um, if you want to provide public comment, you can do it via Zoom. Um, this will help staff and consultants, so they won't have to, wherever they are, they won't have to drive all the way down to Gilroy. Um, for ten, fifteen-minute um, you know, presentation. Um, it'll allow us to stream back out on, on Facebook. Um, and then those will be in return back on YouTube. Um, and then, but in the meantime, um, and this will still happen then, too. If you want to write an email in for public comment. Um, I, you, you, you can still do that in front of our, um, our desk when we show up in front of our computers is literally just like a stack of public comment that was written. Um, so that's one way that you can still interact with us. Um, and uh. Yeah, so that's it. Hope everyone enjoyed this. Um. Like I said, this, I'll, I'll, I'll upload this onto my YouTube page. Um, it'll be on Facebook for the future. I, I. I, I, this is, this is awesome, I, this is a great turnout, um, much a different turnout than, I think I had, the last one was at like seven PM. Um, so I'm, 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 I'm super stoked about it, and I appreciate everybody for showing up here. Um, and for all these questions that were submitted ahead of time, and I look forward to more of these happening, so. Bye, everyone, have a good night, thank you.